Well, we do have Rachel from Cascadia Partners on. Are we still waiting for Jamin?
Yes, there he is.
I'm at the train.
I'm at the train.
You need to meet in a train station, right?
Train. That's what happens when you work out of a train station.
Christian just texted me. She's on her way from Albany but stuck in traffic.
We'll catch her up.
Traffic is dangerous today.
So for the work session, is there any reason why Shyla can't sit up here?
Have fun.
Come be a part of the group, Shyla.
Thanks.
Now, who's this? Who are you?
Shyla is Chad's replacement because Chad, Chad Mun is leaving us.
Right.
So Shyla is the new Chad.
Oh, congratulations.
I'm the not Chad, not Chad.
Are you part of the group now?
Oh, you can sit up.
I am November 9th, so that's when she would be official. But this is kind of a big work session, so I made her take the time to do it.
She's a commissioner in waiting.
She's what?
Commissioner in waiting.
Oh, really?
Anywho.
You might as well have a comfortable chair.
It is 5:01 Dawn.
Okay, then let's make it happen. Go for it.
Okay. So, welcome everybody to our work session. We've talked quite a bit about the housing production strategy, or at least I've let you know that it's been going on and what the goals are. Generally speaking, the state of Oregon has a housing shortage. As part of that process of trying to address the housing shortage crisis, the state has identified a housing production strategy development need for cities of 10,000 or more. And the purpose of the housing production strategy is to identify things that we at the city level can do to promote the production of housing, and it's, it's all types of housing. It's the housing that we're not quite addressing yet in our code, the housing that we need more of. It goes in line with the housing needs analysis that we did a couple of years ago. So as part of a grant through DLCD, we have hired Cascadia Partners to help us go through the process of creating this housing production strategy. We gave you a very long presentation to review before the meeting. What will be presented to you is a shortened presentation, and what I want to stress is the purpose of the meeting today is for us to identify strategies that are an absolute no-go. Strategies that based off of what you see in front of you and what you've read and the questions you ask are going to be the things that we don't want to even pursue or put into the, the public because we know based off of the public that we already understand they're not going to want to see or that you have serious concerns over. We'll go over it, but this is the first step of many that we will be going through between now and the end of this contract, which will be sometime in March, April, or May time period. And so if there's no burning questions about what our goal is of today, turn it over to our consultants, Jamin and Rachel.
Great. Thank you for that introduction, Kelly. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Great, great, great. So nice to be with you tonight, the planning commissioners, and looking forward to kind of digging into the discussion here. For your background, so my name is Jamin Kimmel. I'm a urban planner, land use planner, and a partner with Cascadia Partners, and so we're a planning and kind of development consulting firm out of Portland. And so we've been working on housing planning and housing production strategies kind of work around Oregon for quite some time. I myself, Mike, have been working on it for about seven years now. And our firm right now is doing several of these types of housing plans around the state for kind of communities, large and small. Yeah, looking forward to the discussion. I'll let Rachel introduce herself before we get started.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Cotton. I am a senior associate at Cascadia Partners, also an urban planner, and am working on many of the same projects that Jamin just mentioned throughout the state on housing production strategies, housing needs analyses. I am based in Lincoln County in Newport, so I'm familiar with kind of small city housing-related planning and policy. And we are enjoying working with Kelly and the city team on this project, so look forward to digging in a little bit more this evening. And Jamin, are you able to share screen in the interest of time? As Kelly mentioned, we sent you a lot of slides to review, and we're really hoping tonight will be more of a conversational, simplified version, but we're hoping to get feedback specifically on the regulatory strategies. But I will start just by covering a little bit of background.
Can everyone see that?
Yes. And next slide, please. So we'll do an overview. Kelly gave a brief overview. I'll go into a little bit more detail on what a housing production strategy is, and then we'll turn it over to Jamin to discuss some regulatory strategies, some options that we've identified that would potentially be helpful for producing needed housing in Lebanon. We'll leave plenty of time within our hour for questions and discussion, and then we'll cover some next steps. Next slide. So as Kelly mentioned, the purpose of a housing production strategy is really to guide a work program that is to be implemented over several years, and it includes prioritization and timing of housing strategies in action. It is required for cities in Oregon with populations 10,000 and over, and it must be updated each time the housing needs analysis is updated, so roughly every six to eight years. Lebanon, as Kelly mentioned, did one in 2019, and the document will identify strategies and actions the city will take to facilitate development of needed housing, and the city must commit to a timeline for implementation as well as report progress to the state every four years. And so what we're here discussing with you this evening is sort of, before we even do a draft of the housing production strategy, we're really wanting to get your feedback on kind of no-go, or you know, that looks good with maybe some refinements, that sort of thing. We're really looking to hear specifically from the planning commission, given that you are very familiar with the kind of development context and maybe some challenges related to housing development in Lebanon. Next slide. So really, we're looking for your feedback to inform that final set of strategies and actions, and we will continue to work with you as well as city staff. And we met with council last week. It's sort of a continuing conversation. This is our first meeting and certainly not the last. You can see here on the right-hand side of this slide a project schedule. So we are in mid-October. This is the first of a series of meetings with city council and planning commission. We will come to the community on November 10th for a community workshop, and there's currently a survey open through the end of this week just to get some public input related to housing issues and potential solutions in the community. And then early next year, we'll be coming back. We'll be doing some meetings on the housing production strategy draft and another open house before we go through an adoption process. Next slide. And a little bit of review from the housing needs analysis. There are lots of numbers here, but the main takeaway is that that analysis identified the need over 20 years for roughly 2,500 housing units at different income levels. About 1,300 of those are owner-occupied and around 1,200 are renter-occupied. Next slide. And so, given that the housing needs analysis was done in 2019, and we know there's been a lot of development activity in the city in the time since, we took a look at permitting activity and different numbers to actually identify how much housing has been produced since that housing needs analysis was created. And you can see the cross-hatched areas here show really a great amount of housing that's been produced serving primarily low, middle, and upper-income households. Yet there's, there's a need, the solid bars indicate a need, serving lower-income renters as well as ownership opportunities at middle and upper incomes. Next slide. And now we'll turn it over to Jamin to go into some detail on the regulatory strategies.
Great, yeah. So we are going to focus primarily for the discussion of the planning commission on the kind of zoning and regulatory strategies here. And you'll notice in the packet that was sent to you that there are several other strategies related to financial incentives, kind of public infrastructure and investments, different kinds of partnerships, many related to how to acquire or hold land for housing development. So we can answer questions about those today, but we thought we'd dig a little bit more into the zoning strategies because that's the place where, you know, planning commission has a lot of purview and probably a lot of expertise. So the first off, when we started this process, we, we always take a close look at cities' development codes. And we, we looked at the Lebanon development code closely, and as we get through this, these next few strategies, we'll talk about some specific kinds of changes we think that could help the city to better address their housing needs, so to facilitate development of the housing, the types of housing that is, that is most needed. But we want to recognize from the beginning that the code already does a lot to support development of a range of housing types. And so it permits some more affordable housing types in multiple zones, including like duplexes and triplexes and townhomes, has relatively small minimum lot sizes for those more affordable housing types, which is an important factor in affordability, enables multifamily housing at a decently high densities, and does have a density bonus provision for projects that include affordable units. And when I say affordable, I mean income-restricted affordable. So a lot of good starting point there, foundation in the zoning code, but we're always looking for how do we calibrate those current standards to the realities of the market today, and also where the housing needs are greatest today. And another factor in kind of us deciding where to focus our efforts on what kinds of code changes would have the biggest impact is looking at where is the, the most buildable land left in the city? Where's the most housing development likely to happen? And so we took a look at the housing needs analysis, which included the buildable land inventory. And so this data here in this slide shows the, the number of buildable acres remaining in each of the zone districts across the city, the zone district, the residential zone districts primarily. And taking a look at that, we see that there's the most capacity for housing in the RM and MU districts, and relatively less capacity in the RL district and very little in the RH district. And so given that landscape, we are focusing a lot of our recommendations on change, zoning changes that would mostly apply to the RM and MU districts. So you'll see throughout this document that we are providing some, we're quantifying some of the potential impact of zoning changes. And so important to recognize where some of that, where those numbers come from. And we do this because we want to know whether a specific change to a zoning code in a specific community and market with different kinds of land costs and how, and construction costs, want to make sure that it would actually be likely to generate the impact and the outcome that you're hoping for. So if you change a code, will development respond and build the kind of housing of the, the housing that is affordable to the income levels that are shown to be in need and not being met today? So these are some of the numbers that are inputs to that. Just kind of for your background, you can come back to this if you have any questions about some of the financial and, and physical modeling that we do to help inform the, the code strategies. So here's an overview of the regulatory strategies, and so there are six included in here for your consideration. And we break them down into three different categories based on the housing need that they're trying to address. And so the first two are aimed at addressing the need for, for-sale housing, so, you know, ownership housing, affordable under 120% of the area median income. 120% is kind of the upper level of your middle-income bracket. So anything that's affordable to someone kind of on the median income or lower is where we're seeing that the housing market in Lebanon currently isn't delivering a lot of ownership housing opportunities at that income level. And so what kinds of changes would specifically try to address that need? And then the second group of changes are focused on rental housing affordable under 80% of the area median income. And so as Rachel mentioned in looking at that chart of remaining housing units needed a different income brackets, you can see that there was a, a big remaining need for relatively low or very low-income housing, which can be very, one of the most difficult income levels to try to target for a private market to, to, to build units for, because often the rents don't, are high enough to make the project financially viable. But there are some things that cities can do to try to help to meet that need with, through the zoning code, and we have three recommendations there. And then there's the sixth recommendation is something that applies to, to all housing types, in particular to the city's infill design standards that are in the code. Let's go ahead and get into them. So the first one is dealing with encouraging smaller, single-family detached houses. So we're finding and looking at development trends in, in Lebanon in recent years that the typical new single-family house in Lebanon is in those ranges of about 1,800 to 2,500 square feet. That's not uncommon for a city of your size, or any city really, for single-family detached houses to be in that, in that size range. But one of the things that very, that's challenging is that houses of that size are very difficult to make affordable to that kind of median-income family. And we're talking about that, where there's a need for more ownership housing opportunities. And so there's several reasons why builders tend to build larger homes and up in that, that range of 2,000 square feet plus. But one of them is minimum lot sizes. And so as we took a look at the city's minimum lot sizes in those kind of key zones, the RM and MU zone, we noticed that the minimum lot size for a single-family detached house is 5,000 square feet. And there is actually allowances for zero-lot line houses, which are a different version of a detached house. Townhouses on smaller lots, 2,500 to 3,500 square feet. We think there could be some benefit to allowing for your kind of just standard, single-family detached house on that smaller lot of somewhere in the range of 2,500 to 3,500 square feet. The reason for that is if developer can build with smaller lots, they can get more units on the same, same subdivision, the same parcel of land. They can then generate the same return that they're hoping for with larger lots, but with more and smaller units at a lower price point. So that's kind of the benefit of that kind of change of minimum lot size reduction. So we did some modeling to see what that might look like on a, you know, based on the actual code standards in place today in Lebanon. And so this is for, if you look at a kind of a typical five-acre site relatively kind of typical-sized subdivision. So today, if you had 5,000 square foot lots under the existing code, then you would be able to build about 34 units on that site. In order to make that project pencil, and we're giving, assuming those units are about 2,000, 2,200 square feet on average, in order to pick that project pencil, each of those units need to, to be sold for about 490,000 apiece. And that is far above not affordable to that middle-income category. We're looking to try to, to try to better serve. And so if the minimum lot size was decreased to something, allowing something like 2,500 square foot lots, you can see the, the example on the right showing a kind of a typical subdivision with those smaller lots, you could fit up to 62 units in that configuration on that same site. And with each of those units being smaller, so on a smaller lot, doesn't necessarily mean the, the units will be smaller, but the code could have some standards in place to try to encourage smaller units. But if those smaller units are about 1,500 square feet, then the minimum sale price needed to make that project financially viable is 345,000. And that's affordable to someone earning 140 or so percent of the area median income. So you're getting closer to meeting that need at the lower-income, or middle-income brackets. And so this is showing us that there's some real benefits to that minimum lot size reduction. We also know there's some, some concerns about what that would mean in terms of the character of residential neighborhoods and development, and some impacts of having a little bit higher density housing being built or more likely to be built than today perhaps. And so one of the, the concerns that's brought up is kind of access to open space. If you have a smaller lot, you're likely going to have a less yard space. And we do see this as a valid concern. We also see there's some ways to try to address that. What some codes, in exchange for allowing for larger or smaller lots, would then require some amount of common open space on the site. So this could be a small park or open space, likely would be owned by a homeowners association and not be a public park. But one way to try to address that concern in the code would be we can reduce the minimum lot size, but supplement that with a minimum open space, common open space requirement.
Okay, moving on to. Real quick. So, but, but both of these examples that you showed, showed here, these, these are single-family homes, right? We, we don't have any duplexes or, or multiplexes in either of these examples, right?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, real quick, Jamie. With House Bill 2001, any property that we do authorize a single-family home on could then also authorize a duplex on. And so this is not meant for nor designed for, nor would it likely pencil out for the lot sizes that you're talking about to do a duplex, but that doesn't say that the state wouldn't require a duplex to be allowed on it because it does allow for a duplex on that same property.
So theoretically, with these existing 5,000-square-foot lots, every single one of those could be a duplex.
As could exist currently in the city.
With the minimum lot size being 5,100, you can still put a duplex on?
Yes. Straight across the board, House Bill 2001, any property that you allow a single-family home on, you have to allow a duplex to occur in the same manner.
If that's the case, then you've literally already got the 2,500-square-foot lot size in the form of a duplex. I, I, I don't, I don't see how we improve anything by, I, I mean, we make the homes detached is all we're doing, it looks like to me.
Yeah, that, that's a key difference, though, between if we're doing a duplex and a, and a single-family house, or even a townhouse. And so if that was in the configuration of a duplex, the units would be, have to be attached. And those would be on one lot. You'd have two units on one lot. So from a homeownership perspective, yes, a household could, you know, buy that duplex, but the cost for that is likely to be much, much higher than if you have one house on one lot detached. So, you know, I think it'd be much more in the range of the, what the single-family house at 5,000 square feet would be probably higher than that, probably it's, you know, over 500K or so.
If you do the smaller lot sizes the way that they are right now, there, there's not many developers that would look at that and say that's a duplex opportunity. They'd look at that as that's a single-family home sale opportunity.
But they'd still be able to.
But they could do it if they wanted to.
And those are much more likely to be rentals, obviously, than really a homeowner.
As exists today, yes. But this creates an additional option
Sure.
in the market to be able to create those smaller lots for for-sale opportunity.
The homeowners association though, thing you'd, you'd save on the house, cost of the house, but you'd be paying a homeowners association, which it's like a condo.
Right.
Potentially, but I, yeah, I don't think that the we could look into that and try to quantify what is a typical HOA fee cost for like development like this. It kind of depends on what the HOA all includes, but a very simple HOA that's mostly just to maintain some public space. I think the, the compared to the cost of, of a 5,000-square-foot home and a 5,000-square-foot lot, the, the mortgage plus the HOVs, HOA's me, fee of a smaller house on a smaller lot, I think would still be much more affordable than the, the current state of a 5,000-square-foot lot.
So you, you mentioned about the house bill allowing a duplex on anything that's, that's a single family. So the question is, if we have a 2,500-square-foot lot, per that house bill, can that become a duplex?
Yep.
Yes. The reality of it is there's not a house product designed that would likely fit on that well. The, these options that are being presented are options that can be applied in addition to our standard zoning that we have. And so these options are likely going to be utilized by developers who are looking for the exact type of development that Jamin's talking about, that's a single-family detached, small lot that they already have a housing plan for that's going to be applied. If people are looking to develop duplexes, the 2,500 lot is really difficult to think about squeezing something with two different families in as part of it. That's not a traditional duplex design. So is it a possibility? Sure. Is it a possibility now under our current codes? Sure. Is this type of zoning opportunity going to be utilized for that standard? It could be, but it's not likely. It's just, again, one of those menu options that developers would have available to them to choose a different type of housing type.
Well, but if I'm, you know, developer, evil developer, Inc., and, you know, I, I see an opportunity to put in 10 acres of 25-square-foot lots with an upstairs, downstairs, maybe even three stories with, I mean, I, I, I can ridiculously increase the dwelling units
124 year rentals.
per, per square inch of land, fill that sucker absolutely up to the max. And if I, if, if it's cheap enough, because everybody's after affordable, affordable, I mean, that's going to bring all kinds of people in.
And it would still meet the criteria that we have.
And, and if we don't like it, we don't have any ability to say no right now.
Correct.
So we've got six options. Let's go ahead and go through the options, and then we can come back and
Yeah.
and work through them.
Yeah, these are all good, good, good questions, and I'd like to discuss it further, so. But yeah, let's keep going. So the next strategy has to deal with a similar kind of, trying to address that similar kind of need for middle-income for-sale housing. And so the city today has an allowance for cottage cluster housing. I'm not sure if it ever has been used in the city today, but there is an allowance for it. And so cottage clusters are, when you have multiple small houses on a site, and they're usually oriented around a common open space. And so these the these don't all have their own street frontage, which is one thing that makes them more kind of efficient to develop and less costly. They've been built mostly as infill projects now and relatively smaller sites. But currently, the city's code limits the number of cottages on a cottage cluster site to four. And this really limits the economic feasibility of this kind of project. And so it's, it's for cottages regardless of the size of the site. And so the proposal here would be to increase the number of cottages allowed on the site. You don't have a specific number at this time. But what we see in the market typically when these types of projects are built, it's usually at least about 10 to 15 units, maybe eight units in some cases on, on, on a single, on a single site. There's also some opportunity to kind of refine the code standards that regulate cottage cluster housing. Today, there's no kind of maximums floor area of each cottage, so that's one common way to try to make sure these are more affordable is to say you can't build for, you know, 2,500 square foot or 3,000 square foot. You know, twenty five hundred square foot or three thousand square foot houses, they need to be a minimum of or a maximum of, you know, thousand or fifteen hundred square feet. And there's no other designer development standards that try to address some of the. Basic features of a cottage cluster. It's just kind of allowance for cottage clusters, but not a lot to find about what does that mean and what does it need to look like? And so I think there's some 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 improvements that could be made to that code. This is some modeling to show the difference in affordability that can be achieved by allowing more units on the same size lot. So this is kind of a smaller infill lot example, twenty thousand square feet, so about half an acre. Today, only four units would be allowed to make that pencil developer would need to yield units for about four hundred fifty thousand apiece. You're allowed up to six units on that same lot. Then those units would would need to be smaller just to meet the other standards of the code. So you go from units that could be up to two thousand square feet to more in the range of eleven hundred square feet. And each of the units would need to be priced at about two seventy a piece to pencil for this this kind of project. That's affordable at about a hundred and eighteen percent of AMI. So really getting at that goal of. Ownership housing options for that middle income bracket.
So just to be clear, this cottage cluster thing is specifically targeted at. For sale housing, not for rent housing.
The code today doesn't doesn't stipulate that. And I. So that it could be either, but most likely when these have been developed. They are almost always actually in condos. And and a common ownership. And so there they would be owner ownership in that case, they could be rental products, but we just haven't seen that happen very often.
So it it but it's 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 not individual ownership, it would be the condo model where where you've got some sort of. Common body overseeing the shared spaces and things.
Yeah, there kind of needs to be something like that in most of these cases because you often have a shared parking lot, you have a shared kind of common courtyard. And so it does need to have some kind of model to oversee that. Condo model. Good.
Sorry, our rental sensitivity is showing.
Okay. So let's turn to rentals. And so. You know, looking at, you know, that need for rentals for moderate or lower incomes. We took a close look at the all the standards that would apply to multifamily housing today. It's primarily the way that that rental units are are provided on the market. And so our our headline finding is that the many of the standards that are in place in the code today tend to. Contribute to or encourage larger and slightly more expensive rental units. And they also could encourage a relatively inefficient use of land for those rental units. And so those standards that are, we recommend taking a closer look at as part of this project. Are parking requirements, height, open space and maximum density. And those are all kind of interrelated and how they affect the type of development you're likely to see on the site. And so we have some kind of draft recommendations on. Changes to each of those standards that are listed here related to parking and densities and so on. I want to go on to the the example to help kind of give that a picture of what that might look like. But kind of some of the the trade offs that are at play here that we're trying to to navigate is that. You know, having a more efficient layout on a site for a multifamily product, it means higher density, but it also does mean. That it's easier to deliver units at a lower price point. Because you're getting that higher density means more units spread out over the same land cost. And so from a regulatory perspective, the way to try to encourage more affordable. Units or units that are affordable to those lower middle incomes, one of the main ways is to to allow for some higher densities. So there's some trade offs in that. One of those is potentially between allowing for greater height in buildings. And. Open space and parking. So for example, if the the current code limits it buildings to three stories. If maximum heights were increased to four stories, that would necessitate less changes to open space or parking requirements. In order to achieve a higher density. So you get more you more efficient buildings and fit more units in one building. More of the site can still be dedicated to parking or open space. No reductions needed in those types of standards. The trade off is if the maximum height remains at three stories, then we would recommend in order to achieve higher densities. Reducing some parking and open space requirements. Those are gives you it's kind of a preview of some of the relationships which in these standards. Another key concept we want to put forward is the focus on quality of the open space. In addition to the the overall quantity or amount. And so the code today requires that twenty five percent of the site area for a multifamily development be dedicated to open space. That's a pretty high amount and higher than many other cities that we tend to look at. And so. I want to put forward the idea that it's possible to acquire less open space in an area, but achieve similar outcomes. That you care about in terms of access to some recreational facilities, just access to open space in general. You can get better outcomes or the same outcomes that you're looking for with less area on the site. So here's kind of putting those standards together into modeling to give you a sense of of how that could look. And so the existing code is shown on the left and. That is an apartment, a typical apartment building that kind of probably looks a lot like what you're seeing on the ground today. Three stories and the parking ratio is two point two five spaces per unit, just two spaces for every unit. And then a one guest space for every four, every four units. So the. Rent that needs to be that you need you would need to generate on per average rent per unit to make that project pencil is about eighteen hundred dollars a month. Which is close to where the market's coming in now. I think it's a little bit lower in some of the the newer projects, but this is based on the cost data we have for today. So the alternative example here shows potential outcome of increasing the maximum height to four stories. Changing the parking ratio so that it's based on not just a a flat per unit standard, but it's based on the number of bedrooms in the unit. So more space is required for two and three bedrooms, less for one, a studio and one bedroom. And. And then I think some minor tweaks to open space requirements in that model. So you can see the the benefits there of the average rent needed per unit to make that project pencil. You know, similar returns as the project on the left is fourteen hundred square thirteen hundred per unit. That's affordable to someone earning eighty five percent of the area median income. So we talked about that goal of trying to deliver more. Rental units at eighty percent of income of median income or lower. This is getting 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 closer to that. That need. Yeah, okay, I think that's all I have on here. I want to keep us going here. So the next strategy builds on the previous one. So we talked about changes that would apply to. All projects. So those are the all whether they're market rate or whether they're affordable or whether they're a mix. Once those standards are in place, we recommend taking a look at the city's existing incentives for affordable units. And trying to restructure those to make it more. Attractive for a private developer to actually include income restricted affordable units in their project. So today there is a twenty percent density bonus for projects that are affordable to. That include units affordable to households below eighty percent of AMI. And I believe it's a requirement about twenty percent of the units need to be affordable, or excuse me, about ten percent of units need to be affordable. Below eighty percent of AMI. But we haven't, the projects that have used this bonus, as far as understanding, are primarily for our nonprofit affordable housing developers. Where the all of the units are affordable and they have an entirely different kind of way of funding. Housing development. So in order to make that kind of incentive attractive for a private developer. Really needs to be kind of restructured and and and. And designed so that it would actually. Be as profitable to use that incentive as to not use it or even more profitable to use that incentive. And so there are ways to to try to do that. And we have some examples of how that could be done. But it kind of depends on what the base standards that are applied to to multifamily housing. Lastly, under the multifamily housing category. The code today does allow for housing in commercial zones. But there is a restriction that any housing in commercial zones must be on the upper floors above commercial uses. So a vertical mixed use kind of building. This is, that is kind of the ideal type in a commercial zone. If you want to have the 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 ground floor in commercial uses. Unfortunately, that kind of project just doesn't really pencil in in many places. Couple of the challenges with it are, that's a lot of the ground floor retail space to fill. And often that the the retail is not as a retailer office space is not in as high demand as as housing is. And it's just a much more complex kind of development to finance and 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 build. Many different reasons why it's 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 more complex. So we think there's an opportunity to provide a little more flexibility for how housing could be built in commercial zones. That may still require mixed use, but potentially it could require, it could allow for horizontal mixed use. So if you have a storefront or a commercial building on the front edge of the street, housing in the back of the lot. Or it could allow for vertical mixed use, but not require that the entire ground floor be commercial uses. So a portion of the ground floor could be a commercial use. That would make it a little bit more attractive for mental housing to be built in commercial zones. We think this is an important strategy because there's some benefits to having flexibility about where housing can be built. Some of the places in commercial zones may be. Attractive for commercial, but some of them may not. And having that flexibility to have some housing or a different configuration of housing. May may lead to more developers, you know, building housing in the commercial zones. So last regulatory strategy deals with the city's current infill design and compatibility standards. There was, there's a provision, kind of a special set of rules in the city's code for infill sites. And so those are sites on less than one acre. And the rules require that an applicant create a kind of detailed inventory of all the adjacent uses. And demonstrate that their proposed development is compatible with those uses. And so the few reasons why this could be a barrier to to housing development, infill housing in particular. Kind of doing that inventory of all the adjacent sites is relatively complex and costly process. And secondly, the the requirements that have to do with showing that your proposal is compatible. With those adjacent uses. Does not, on our reading of it, does not meet the state's requirements that all housing be subject to clear and objective standards. Maybe some of those standards could be considered subjective, vague or discretionary. And so there's a need to have a clear and objective set of rules that applies to those infill projects. And so the proposal here would be to either replace those those current infill design standards with something that's more clear and objective. But achieves a similar intent. Or offer two tracks of approval. So one that's a clear and objective. And if the applicant decides they don't want to try to meet those standards, they could have could use the more discretionary track. Okay. Now we wanted to pause for go back for for any questions, discussion.
Is it is it safe to say that you're just presenting these options to us? You're not really pushing one or the other? Just curious.
No, no, I mean, we're, we would, the point of us at this stage in the process is. We're laying out, yes, options for you. On our reading of it, all of these are worthy to include in the housing production strategy for future implementation. We, but we we also recognize that some of these may need to be tweaked, may need to be refined. Or some of them may, you just may not be interested in exploring that further. And that is not, it's not required from the state that you. Adopt all of these. We're kind of laying out all the options and looking for your feedback so we can refine it.
I understand.
Hi there, this is Lori. I had a question. Can I ask a question real quick? Just to clarify. So the presentation and the needs that you're presenting, those are based on the city of Lebanon. Addressing the needs to comply with the state requirements. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the state requirement around a housing production strategy is that the. Set of strategies and actions in the document. The city needs to be able to demonstrate that those are addressing the city's housing needs that were identified in the housing needs analysis. So we looked at the housing needs analysis and we've identified strategies that we think address those needs.
Okay, I was I was wondering how, so when you did the analysis, what was that based on? I guess. Yeah, I mean, how do you gather that data?
So that was actually done in twenty, I think eighteen and nineteen. By a separate consulting firm. And yeah, so much of the data we're basing on is from that document. You know, the housing needs analysis that was was done in twenty nineteen.
For the city of Lebanon. Okay.
Yes.
Not not as a, okay, thank you. I just wanted to.
So Jamie, these six options that you presented, I'm assuming are being instituted in different communities around the state. Some of them I've identified, I mean, they look more like metropolitan area type options. What options are being used in in communities similar to Lebanon?
Well, I think there many of these are being explored in in communities similar to Lebanon. I think things like cottage cluster housing is seen as something that's probably similar to the character of a smaller town with a lot of single family houses. But just in a form that could be, you know, delivered by the market at a lower price point. Same with the, you know, smaller, single family detached houses. So I, you know, I don't, I think that some of these, yes, are are also being implemented by larger cities. But many, many smaller cities are also doing very similar things.
Has there been any market survey how these options would be received in a smaller community?
Well, we did do some developer roundtables and that informed some of our thinking on these. So we we did kind of a interview with a group of private developers. And then did another with a group of nonprofit affordable housing developers. And some of these, we we kind of structured some of these to. Incorporate their feedback.
And I I think something that's important to keep in mind is these strategies are responsive to the income levels in your community. So it may be helpful to think about it in terms of that. It's not necessarily about a product. I mean, of course, many people would prefer to live in a large, single family home on a large lot. But when looking at the community and the housing needs and a lot of, you know, the responses to the survey, for example. People are saying their number one concern related to housing is just the affordability, both for ownership and rental housing. So these strategies are meant to deliver housing that still is, you know, meets the market needs and and consumer preferences. But at price points. But at price points that are tailored to the need in the community. If that's helpful, is if that's a more helpful way to think about it. So it's not like urban versus rural, you know, big community, big city versus small city. It's more who's in the community and what can they afford, both for rental and and ownership housing.
I think one more thing to add, and there's no advocating for any of these. This is truly a community discussion. But we have our current zoning standards. We have our current lot size as our current development standards. These are not meant to, or at least in the example of the small lots or the smaller law options. They're not identified as a wholesale replacement of those standards. It is an additional tool option that developers can choose for some properties if it makes sense based off of the site and its own constraints. So, for example, we allow for the traditional single family home project, which is five thousand square foot lots. But we also allow for the zero lot line projects, which allow for thirty five hundred square foot lots and townhomes that allow for twenty five hundred square foot lots. And apartments. We allow for multiple types of housing opportunities. This would be an addition for the example of the small lot. It would not be a replacement. And then the other ones, like the the calibrating, the standards, those would be an adjustment to our standards. But this is again, looking at the opportunities to fill in those gaps. Of housing that we're not currently providing, like Rachel said, based off of the income levels and the. The needs that were identified in the housing needs analysis. And that were discussed of the types of housing that's needed for the community to be built. So.
I'm still trying to get over the shock that a rental is fourteen hundred dollars for a seven hundred and eight foot unit, okay? And the kind of I get the feel of this feels metery to me because I think a parking limitation in a property. Kind of assumes some public transportation that maybe we don't have. Just just a feel.
Some of it could.
Well. I'd I'd like to throw out.
Hey Kelly, we we can't hear whoever was just talking there. So. You could just repeat if there's a question for us.
You have to start all over again.
Generally speaking, he was identifying that this would fundamentally change the way Lebanon looks, and we have to be cognizant of that. And allow for growth, but in a manner in which Lebanon maintains its character.
Yeah, I'd like to throw out some thoughts and opinions, my opinions, if everybody has a few moments to think about this stuff. Lebanon's population is seventeen thousand. Our median age is thirty seven. Our median household income is forty five thousand. And they have fifty three in here somewhere. That forty five thousand medium income puts us in the eleven hundred and fifty dollar a month rate of income bracket, which. Doesn't qualify us for the fourteen or eighteen hundred dollar a month. There's currently ten low income apartment complexes here in Lebanon. I don't know if more will solve our problems. Now. There's a lot of government subsidies and grants out there that can help us out and helps out, you know, people HUD. Christine's familiar with all that stuff, and she can probably explain it better than I can. But as far as rent and the price of homes, I think the market sets that. You know, we have in this packet here tells us, well, our rent's going to be, you know, fourteen to eighteen hundred dollars a month on these buildings. We don't know that. I don't think anybody knows that. And the market sets those kind of prices on homes and rent. And we don't know what it's going to be like a year or two from now. The and another thing, the current standards that we have on lot size and. It was put in place for a reason. The planners that came before us. You know, it's already been through all this stuff and thought it out and talked it out and argued it out. And, you know, Don can probably attest to that. And there's a reason why these standards in the in. And our code is the way it is. To me, I think we're setting ourselves up for slums. Our future, you know, I look at this picture and it kind of looks like a berry camp. When I was ten and fifteen years old, I remember the berry camps. And these little tiny homes, that's what it reminds me of. It just looks like a future slum to me. So, you know, I'm real leery about stuff like that. When you start part packing people into a small area like cattle. You develop all kinds of social problems and crime and, you know. Everything from what we just witnessed lately, a pandemic swept through our communities. You pack people in too close and and like that. And you're just asking for those kind of troubles. Now. I I'm okay with housing in commercial zones, an apartment above a a business or something like that. That, you know, that actually sounds like a. A good way to solve. A lot of housing issues for a lot of people. But the thing is here. We're getting a lot thrown at us all at once. This is a lot of stuff to digest, and I think it's going to take us some time. I don't think we're going to. Come to any conclusions or solve any problems in one, two, or even maybe three months. I mean, we're talking about taking this into next year, right?
Yeah, so that's just one just one aside is.
Right.
This is the kickoff. There will be multiple meetings like we talked about. We're not asking you to absorb this, understand it, and make a decision about what you like and don't like.
We get to leave before we decide.
So so without mandates.
Thing that the the one thing that we wanted from tonight, and you can say that there's none that are off the table, but the one thing that we wanted tonight was if there's an impression of something that's an absolute no go.
Well, I think an absolute no go would be to lower our parking standards. Because, you know, Lebanon is not a town where we have a a bus stop on every corner. People have their vehicles and they're going to drive them. And if you have an apartment with two or three bedrooms, you're going to have two or three cars. And if you limit your parking spots to two point two five, which is what we've done, you know, you're going to have people parking six blocks away. From from this apartment complex. You know, walking to their apartment, bugging up the streets, you know, in other parts of the town. I and in this three and four story apartment buildings, my goodness. If I had to throw a baby on one hip and a bag of groceries on the other and climb four flights of stairs, I think I think I'd be calling nine one one by the time I got to the top.
What's the elevator requirement?
So, you know, and there's no mention of elevator requirements in this packet. I think personally, I think that anything over one story should have an elevator, even the old Elks Lodge has an elevator. For people that, you know, wobbling around with a cane or whatever, which I'm getting close to that. So. And and another thing, as as far as there's been mentioned of reducing the SDCs. And let's say giving them a break or whatever, you know, I personally, I'm opposed to that. I think that that there should be an SDC on every door, not unit or building. I think that if somebody, if a developer wants to come in here and build a three or four story apartment complex, he's got one thing in mind. His goal is to make as much money as he can in as short a time as possible. So and then, you know, he's not going to live in one of these apartments or live here in Lebanon. He's going to be living on some beach in Maui. So with all the money he's made, because, you know, I I'm in the construction business. I'm a contractor. And when I look at a job like that, the first thing I look at is how much money do I want to make on that project? That's the first thing I ask myself. And if it's, you know, three hundred thousand dollars or whatever. That's my goal. And whatever else fits into the into the into the process or the planning. I want that goal to be my three hundred thousand dollars on that project. So. You know, giving developers a break doesn't necessarily equate to lower rent or lower house prices. Because again, I think the market's going to set that. So if anybody else has.
Well, the the property tax thing kind of concerns me too. Well, I don't understand the full dynamics of it, given a developer property tax breaks, kind of is the same kind of feel to me.
We're down to one minute. And what I think you're wanting to know is what's off the table?
If if any, and and you can say.
Four stories is off the table.
Nothing off the table, or you can say there's.
Without an elevator.
Four stories or parking is off the table is what I heard.
Another option, we got public hearing in one minute. Can we pause this discussion and pick it up in a few minutes?
One. One reminder is that we'll be sending out a survey. On these, just to get more feedback. So I'm looking at the clock. I want to be respectful of your public hearing. But you'll have a chance to spend a little bit more time and review the strategies and provide us some specific feedback.
I'm not sure about the survey thing. I mean, I get those all the time and for different things. I have no idea what I'm filling out.
Well, it's specifically tied to these strategies. So you should be able to figure it out, I think.
So I I think right now it's discussion. I would say if the consultants wants to stick around until after the public hearing. There's nobody else in the audience but the representative. So it should be quick. So you're welcome to stick around. I know that we only had it scheduled with you guys for an hour. If the planning commission wants to put a hold on the the work session and pick it up after the meeting, you can talk to me and I can fill them in. Or if you guys want to stick around, that's that's at your ability and discretion. So.
I have more.
I think at this point, it's due to the timing will pause and. Whatever you guys would like to do from there.
Okay, I'm I'm willing to stick around, so I will as well on it.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, then if I can have you stop sharing your screen, Jamie. We can move through the agenda.
Okay, so then we will pause the work session and. Open our hearing and be standing for a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And could we get the roll call, please?
Commissioners Angel Ford.
Here.
Fountain Baxter Workman.
Here.
Munn is absent, and I'm sad to say today was going to be his last meeting. And he's moving out of state, so we wish him well. Commissioner Versiers McLean, Vice Chair Garrett Kunarowski.
Here.
Chair. And Chair Robertson.
Here. Okay, we have two sets of minutes. I assume you've had the opportunity to review them. Let's take them one at a time. The minutes August nineteenth. Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
August seventeenth.
August nineteenth. On the agenda. Oh, you're right. They're different days.
Today's the nineteenth.
Do you have any?
Okay, so the August seventeenth minutes. Any additions or corrections? Okay, hearing none, then those minutes will stand approved as presented. And moving on to September twenty first, is that the correct date?
Yes, that's incorrect.
Any additions or corrections? Right, hearing none, then those minutes will also stand approved as presented. All right. Do we don't have anybody online, citizens?
No.
Okay, so we will forego the citizen comment, move right on to our public hearing planning file A dash two two. Dash zero seven. Ask if there's any ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias. I will disclose that when the applicant bought the property, he purchased it from the my firm. I've had no contact with him since that time, and I was not directly involved in the sale. Okay, anything else? All right, then we will open the public hearing. I guess I'll open it planning file A dash two two eight oh seven. Turn it over. So really cool legal stuff.
Really cool legal stuff. We'll follow the quasi judicial hearing procedures of ORS one ninety seven dot seven sixty three. And we don't have any witnesses on the phone.
No.
I can go through the briefly.
Okay.
They've already asked for ex parte contact, conflicts of interest or bias. We will start out with the staff report and then allow questions to staff by counsel. We'll then open it up to public testimony, of which there is none other than the applicant, it appears. We will do the testimony of the applicant. I still do need to say that failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the. The planning commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes any appeal to the Landy's Board of Appeals. We will then close the public hearing and a decision will generally be made.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Not will turn it over to staff for staff report.
Hey, good evening. Before you tonight is annexation request A twenty two dash oh seven. Property is located on the east side of the Saniam River on East Grant Street. It has a comprehensive plan designation. Of residential mixed density. And then if annexed into the city, the first zoning designation would be residential mixed density. Which the applicant has identified a willingness to accept. So there is no proposed change to the zone upon annexation. Surrounding the property to the north and south are properties that are within the county. But within our urban growth boundary, and they are currently largely vacant. To the east and sorry, to the west and southeast. Are also properties within the county, but are improved with single family homes. And to the east is the property that is contiguous to the to the boundary. It is property that's within the city of Lebanon, and it is currently vacant. It has been approved for a partition that would eventually potentially have. Single family homes developed on it, but nothing has been developed yet. So the proposal tonight is simply to annex the property. There is water facilities available in Grant Street that this property would be able to annex. There is no city sewer on the east side of the river. And so the property would be able to be developed to urban standards, so long as the parcels. If they were to ever be developed are large enough to support a septic system. And so with there being water availability and with the parcel being a large enough size to hold a septic. It is able to be developed, which means that it can be urbanized. And with that, and it being contiguous to city boundaries, those are the status requirements for annexation. So the recommendation tonight is to approve the annexation or recommend approval of the annexation to the city council. And that concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, is there any questions for staff?
I have a question for Ron. And Kelly, I guess.
You can lean towards the mic so that we can.
Oh. When do you think if if any time that they're going to is going to be a sewer line over there?
Ah.
A while.
Talking ten, twenty years from now, long, long time.
My guess is we may never see one over there, to be honest with you. I mean, I don't I don't know that you would. So so here's the thing with with the Grant Street piece. In order to build up higher there and 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 fill that even more. You're talking about a booster station, a different pressure zone for water. So likely what you're going to see is a bunch of larger lots with septic and potentially wells. That property right there, we wouldn't allow much higher for a water service just based on pressure. Because you're off the the reservoir. So most of it's going to be septic and well, unless somebody. Infrastructure wise, you know, had a bunch of money and wanted to dump it into it.
How how did you get water over there? Is it is it in a pipe on that train trestle or?
So so right up the road there, in fact, you can see at the circular object there is our Grant Street reservoir.
Oh.
Yeah, so and that's part of the pressurized system.
So the water goes to the city, not from the city?
Yeah, it goes back and forth.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll open the public testimony portion and turn it over to applicants representative for testimony.
Thank you. My name is Laura LaRocque with Udell Engineering and Land Survey, the applicant's representative this evening. Again, the annexations are pretty straightforward requests. This one is contiguous to the city limits. It is it has the ability to connect to water and sewers, support single family development. So essentially, this request allows the jurisdictional boundaries to change and apply the Lebanon Development Code to the sites in the future. Which allows the property owner to create slightly smaller lots than he'd be able to in the county for future development of single family. With that, I'll wrap up. Turn over to questions.
Any questions for Laura? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, seeing nobody else to testify, we'll close the public hearing. All further discussions will be among staff and planning commissioners. What say ye? Any concerns? I'm assuming the access point to the property is the little neck that touches. Um, I'm assuming the access point to the property is the little neck that touches Berlin Road? Or is there a different access?
The access to the property is Grant Streets.
Which I think is gravel.
Okay, is that where the neck was?
That's Berlin.
Oh, on the, on the other end of it, okay.
The neck is Berlin.
So the neck here is Berlin and then the main access would be off of Grant.
Okay, all right, fine.
So you were.
I guess that makes sense.
Were, were you asking?
We had to have at least one dumb question.
Don, were you asking how much of the property abuts to city limits?
No, 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 I wasn't thinking.
The property abuts to city limits along this entire portion here.
Yeah.
After a long time, I didn't know East Grant came down there and was gravel from what it says, I think. Gravel Road now.
Okay, any other questions? Do you feel that the criteria has been met for the annexation? Seeing heads nod affirmatively. Uh, anybody ready to make a motion?
I moved at the planning commission, recommend approval of annexation A 22 07 to the city council based on the written findings in the staff report. And direct staff to draft an order of recommendation incorporating the findings and conditions of approval.
I'll second.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, it's been motioned in the second for approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, we're one minute late.
Sorry. Do you want to finish the actual meeting agenda and then go back to the?
Yeah, let's do that. All right. Over to staff.
Uh, we're gonna have a meeting next month.
That's, that's it. Okay. So is there any commissioner comments that we need to talk about now or? Questions for staff?
I have a question to staff that might have to do with this next thing, and this is just a generic question. What, it says we need more. Low income housing. What triggers that? I'm, and this is gonna sound goofy, but low income people are living here now and they're living in someplace. What tells us we need more link, low income housing and how does that quantify?
So. I'm gonna say that that's something that's really great to ask and talk about as part of the work session.
Okay.
In other words, that's why we have experts.
I thought Kelly was an expert, my bad.
Oh, she is.
I can answer the question.
You always have been.
Most appropriate in the work session, I think.
So do, will we have a work session next month as well, Kelly? Do you know?
Or?
I don't know.
We don't have anyone currently scheduled.
But can, do we have a work session ever? Like saying this that we're discussing now, would we meet again to continue that discussion without presenters?
Uh, we can have generalized discussions as part of the planning commission comments.
Okay.
If you want to have additional comments and additional discussions with staff. That's outside of the scope of, of the presenters, we can schedule one.
Okay. I wasn't sure it worked.
Yeah, I, I'd say let's see how the rest of the conversation goes and we can figure out if we need one.
Okay. So it wouldn't be a planning commission meeting if somebody didn't ask, is Dairy Queen still coming?
It is, at their pace.
It is still coming. They're just using their, you know, blizzard spoons to, to dig into the dirt and do it one spoon at a time.
Did they figure out access?
Yes, that's all been figured out.
Okay. All right, so if there is anything else, then we will adjourn the meeting and go back to our work session. Is our consultant still with us?
They still are.
Good.
We missed you.
Thank you.
So to answer.
Can I get some Dairy Queen here?
So as a general speaking of, of your question, yes, we have a population of residents here. We also have a responsibility to accept uh, the fact that there's going to be growth in our community and that we need to anticipate and provide services for our existing community as well as the projected growth. Of our community. And so as part of the housing needs analysis, we identify that our existing community, based off of our income levels that we have. Um, either that existing community is living in a situation where they can't technically afford their homes, which is why we have the severe rent burn community conversations. Um, they're bunking up two or three to a household to be able to afford where they live, and so it's overcrowding of the household. They're still living in, in multiple family units. And, and so based off of the income of the residents that we have here. Um, we should be providing X number of affordable housing units to service the residents that we have here. As our projected population grows, there's multiple factors that are considered as part of that, which is based off of our job growth, the industries that we have. The expectation of incomes associated with the industries that we have and the industries that are expected to come here. And how that job population basis and income population basis determines the affordability of what a person would be able to afford of their homes. As population grows. And so it's a mix of, we have them here, they're residing here, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're residing in a right size or right affordability of a unit. And then we have to plan for the projected growth as well.
That, that sounds like a lot of algebra to make a concrete decision with.
There's a lot of algebra to make a concrete decision and Jamin and Rachel might have an easier answer than that.
Well, I think the old strategy was that in order to bring down housing costs, we just build more apartments and we get so many of them that. It'll just, the market will correct itself and it'll bring down the price of things. That hasn't worked. So I think that this is uh, just more strategy to try to solve that problem. And I think that this is the right direction to go in by hiring this company and, you know, coming up with these ideas and having this discussion. Something that I'd really like explored more, so we've already talked about, we've got these different options that aren't being utilized. Townhomes and, and the zero lot line thing and what have you. Um, I, I, I'd really like to understand what we have already in place. And uh, understand why, why we think we need to change it, what's wrong with it? Cause, cause this, this just like paints this picture of, oh, well, we could do all this fantastic stuff and we're like, well, we're not sure it's all that fantastic and. I'd like to know what's currently going on with what we already have and understand that. I'm open to tweaking what we have to make it work better for people if we need to. Um, the other thing, I'm really concerned. Uh, so when the state uh, butchered 50 years of land use planning in Oregon. I mean, the doors are wide open here for all kinds of things that we don't necessarily understand. And if we approve these smaller lot sizes, in general, I'm okay with that. But we don't necessarily know what we're saying yes to in doing that. I've got big concerns. About that smaller lot size opening us up to things that we do not intend. And we can't undo that. I mean, we, we, we can't necessarily rectify what took place with uh, uh. Or the Oregon legislature, but we can be a lot more protective of Lebanon itself.
So just a little bit of uh, historical perspective, we had that proposal probably maybe 12, 15 years ago. Uh, shrink the lots and go up, uh, increase the density. And at that time, the planning commission rejected it simply because they didn't feel it was reflective of Lebanon.
Right.
Uh, and we, it didn't go any further and until now. Um, I guess the big question I have, if you've got a, you've got a piece of property that's developable. Uh, generally speaking, a developer will come in and he will look at it to, like you said, Dave, to what is going to increase his profits the most. Um, and so he will plan that piece of bare land uh, to where he feels he benefits the most. Uh, whether the market will uh, support it or not, I, I, you hope that they've already done their, their due diligence. Um, and I'm assuming they have, cause we've talked about that with the apartments, uh, that they wouldn't have done it, they would have invested that kind of money if they didn't feel it was. Appropriate for the need. So I, I'm, I'm reluctant to do a lot of code changes. Not knowing if the market is gonna support it. Um, I wish there was, I'm not opposed to uh, trying something to see if it's accepted, to see if it's marketable. But I'm, I'm a little reluctant to go through all the effort of making code changes to accommodate it if it's never gonna be used. For instance, we've got the zero lot lines. We've got the townhouses uh, that's allowed. And we've never had developers take advantage of them we speak of. So it makes me reluctant to go through that effort.
I take advantage of the zero lot line.
Sorry?
I said I take advantage of the zero lot line, but I'm also, I build affordable homes for low income families.
So. It's all about the market.
Hmm.
Right? Um, the apartments are being built because there was a bit of time there where apartments weren't being built. And there's changes in the dynamics in our region and there's increased costs associated with living and there's the types of. Um, industries and schools and universities that we've brought in that dictate the type of. Units that were needed and the market developed based off of the market demand. The market itself is telling us now that things are slowing down. The market itself is telling us now that the number of apartment units and apartment developments is slowing down. In comparison to what we've seen in the last couple of years, we've seen far less proposals for apartments this year and far more proposals for subdivisions this year. Um, and so the market goes through its cycles. And I know that everybody is going through the cycle of we're tired of seeing apartments and please make it stop. I, I think the, and, and I can um, share additional documents with you for further review, cause it's not like I don't ask you to read enough, but. Um, we have a contextual needs analysis and we have the doc, the, one of the slides in here talks about what is needed. For our community based off of our existing population and our growing population. Um, the market hasn't taken advantage of townhomes because they're not selling well based off of the ones that are built. Is that a conversation that um, we can have with some of the developers that have tried to develop it where it's a decision of. People still want to have their own single family home, their own four walls that they're not sharing? That, that could be a factor because that's a character that Lebanon wants to be able to have. Um, if that's the case, the town home option that we have is not being utilized. Because the market's not identifying that as something that they want to utilize. So in exchange, instead of the town home option. Again, not advocating anything, please just make that clear. Um, is instead of the town home option which is available now and not being utilized. Is an alternative to that, these smaller lots where you can still have your own individual four walls, you can still have your own individual plot of land. But it's the smaller plot of land that you can afford um, to fill that void that the town homes should be filling based off of the market and based off of the identified need. Or is there an alternative? Um, all that being said. Marcel S. Bryant here have a massively good point that we don't know the implications. We don't know what we're getting into. We're not going to know that tonight. This is the start of the conversation and the start of the process. There will be many more meetings like we identified. And we're just trying to identify, what do you need to know more about it and what is it that you absolutely hate? Is what we're trying to, to get to at this point. Not to keep harping on that, but. We understand that this is a start of a conversation. There's a lot of implications. So those are the types of things. And I know that we all want to see single family homes, our traditional developments. I think we have to recognize that based off of the population we have, based off of the population progression. Everybody needs a place to live and we have residents here in Lebanon that are living in a way that's unaffordable to them. So is there a service that we can provide in the city that is going to make a livable, affordable option for them? And are these options that are on the table going to be available for that? Beyond that, what it looks like, I'll do that to you all.
Kelly, my, I, I think I had this, I asked you this the other day, a 5,000 square foot lot is point 11 of an acre, is that correct? Was that what we had decided?
I think so.
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, okay.
Um, of, of, of the things presented here, um, I do like the idea of uh. Streamlining our regulations for infill. And I do like uh, the idea of uh, repurposing commercial space. With that, uh, and, and this is kind of a thing that's bigger than just housing by itself, but um. I would really like to see a way to incentivize non-vacant buildings. Um, we've got a lot of uh, commercial spaces that's vacant. Um, probably not so much residential, but uh. Any non-occupied building is a blight on the town and a open door for crime. And uh, I think downtown, having more people living there, filling up the vacant commercial space would be good. I think that would increase the competition for uh, that square footage uh, and potentially make it more. Financially compatible or competitive to, to uh, offer lower uh, priced housing. I, I, I don't, I don't know uh, what kind of strings or levers or things that we have at our disposal to, to do that. Um, I don't know if we could maybe uh, add a property tax surcharge if you've got vacant buildings or something or whatever, but I know that um. There are landowners that are just, they own the land and they're just charging the heck out of uh, out of the rent. Uh, the corner kitchen cafe that uh, is no longer there. They were driven out by a rate increase. Then the barbecue place that went in there afterwards, they were driven out by a rate increase. That's not good for the town. And I, I, I understand that they're just gonna charge what the market can bear, but if we can incentivize. Um, things so that uh, existing tenants remain, that's good for both commercial, residential, et cetera.
We can look at that as part of the economic opportunity analysis that we're working on. Um, I think that's a, a great shoe in for, for that analysis, which is happening at the same time as this one is. And so I, I've taken that down as a note and we can actually incorporate that for sure.
So as far as the six options that were presented, um, what do you want to hear from us?
Is there anything that you just don't even want to consider further? Or is everything still, we need more information to be able to make a good decision?
I think that's pretty accurate.
Yeah.
Cause I think we, we don't know what, we don't know if we're bringing the change or reacting to the change. We don't know what the implications of what we do are yet. So I don't say take anything off the case. I understand that you put too many people in an area that has its problems. But I also understand there are people who live in, my house is in 2,000 square feet and I have a big lot. So. There will be people who'd be willing to buy a smaller house on a smaller lot. Nobody want, not everybody wants to mow their lawn all the time like I do, so. There's a lot of, lot of implications.
Well, and Tina makes a good point. We've got, I mean, there's a lot of residents that, that need housing. The demand is off the chart. Um, it, it's, it, true, it's slowed down a little bit now, but that's, that's beyond our, our purview. Uh, so I'm, I'm really torn. Uh, we, we'd like to provide that housing. Uh, but at the same time, do we want to compromise the character of the city? So it's, it's a, it's a wrestling match for me.
Well, math wise, I mean, we have here risked the deflect, the $1,400 rent thing. And then we have behind that. Cost of living type stuff from, from 2018, that's not accurate anymore. That's not affordable for a lot of people with what inflation's done. So I think we need those timeframes to add up a little better to make a better decision.
So the, the, I, I hear that and I think that we could work on that. I think that the, the snapshot. Of the, the cost of a unit and the price of a house and all that kind of stuff, those are um. Projections and those are point in time and the second that we're done with this conversation, they're going to be out of date.
I got you.
But the concept is how does the concept that is being proposed equate to reduction in cost and increase in. Uh, ability to perform and provide housing that's more affordable.
Community Land Trust.
That's an option that we haven't discussed yet, but is on. That's an option that we haven't discussed yet, but is on the table that we, we can, that is going to be discussed. Yeah.
What was the option, Tina?
Community land trust, which I'm working on paperwork for now. So it's community land trust and I, to me, you have a lot of questions and variables that aren't being answered. Do you want four-story apartment buildings in the city of Lebanon? We probably had that issue when we went from two to three. Three seems high. There's a, I mean, that's a lot of fly the stairs to climb. The other question is with a four-story, do we have a ladder truck that can put out a fire if something was to happen with that? You're wanting to reduce the amount of parking spaces in there. How easy is it for our fire department, emergency personnel to get into those locations? And people have a tendency to, I take the Queen Anne Apartments, for example. They have, I think it's the 2.75 or 2.25 parking. They do have a lot of open area parking for guests to come that are not used. And guess what happens? They've got dumped cars in there, people's vehicles quit running and working and then they sit there and, and gather garbage because I look at it all the time over in that area for my daughter living there. So yeah, maybe we do. And one of the things when you're looking at affordable housing units for people, there's a lot of times these people do not have more than one vehicle. And then there's sometimes that they do. But if you make areas that have a little open land area, like a little park area for, you know, HOA fees that pay for that to keep that up, that gives the families a place to be able to take and have birthday parties with extra families to come and provide out, you know, parking outside of that if, if at all possible. But I look at this on a daily basis, trying to figure out how I can build affordable housing and more of it quicker. And of course, the, the cost is driven by the cost of materials and the labor in, in the area. But I sell, I don't rent. So there's lots of different options. But one of the things is looking at a four-story, are we ready to move to four stories? And where are we looking to move those at? If you change the zoning, if you're changing commercial, if you're flip flopping land, you know, where are you going to see those? Are there going to be an ISO? Well, no, because we have it in the code requirements, how we dictate what landscape looks like and housing production. So, I mean.
This is all about getting comfortable.
Yeah.
I, I will say that we are going to be doing this again in eight years.
Do I have to remember it?
Be here in eight years.
I bring that up because there is the question, and, and this is something that is again, no decisions need to be made. It's just simply, is there something that you hate so much that you're going to yell and scream at me and throw something if I bring it up again? Doesn't sound like we're there yet.
Close.
There are things. There, there are things that are on this list that are identified by our consultants who are, who have been doing this and are smarter at this than I am, that they say these are viable options now. We're under no obligation to implement all of these and we could look at it and go, we're going to incrementally look at this and go, this is a better option for us to reconsider in eight years when we have to do this all over again. And so you guys can tell me if I'm wrong on this, on the consultant side, but we, we have maneuverability here. We can, we can start out with what is comfortable and we can start out in thinking about what's going to be needed as we move forward. But they're shaking their heads like I'm not being an idiot. So.
They didn't do that.
Yeah. Yeah. And I was also going to offer that there are, there's a lot more information we could bring to you in the next meeting that may help to, help you get a better grasp of the implications of this and how, how you could approach changing some of the zoning standards here. So, but like a couple of things that I'm taking note of that I think we'll go back and bring to you. So on the parking topic, there is data available from the census on actual vehicle ownership per household at the local level. We haven't pulled that yet, but that's, I think, something would be worthy looking at. And it's surprising sometimes, like was alluded to that while, you know, you may be used to a lot of families own two cars, rental families, families that are renters, family that are lower income do tend to own less cars. And so there's some of that where it's trying to align them, the standards with the actual demand in the market with parking. So we can bring some more information on that.
Mr. Kimmel, could you provide us with data specifically on Lebanon, on the parking issue?
Yep, yeah, there's data available for, at the local level. Yep.
Thanks.
And as, as change comes, we have to realize that obviously if you offer a four-story apartment complex or something else, we have to change the structure of our transportation because the one bus that we added is so busy, but it needs more stops because it doesn't cover every area. So when you start adding these more high-density buildings in locations, you've also got to look at your transportation issues with that.
So that's what I was going to bring up, not specifically that, but the question is what responsibility do we have as far as external impacts? Like school capacities and infrastructures and that type of thing?
So all of the, the proposals that we're putting forward are going to have to be subject to code changes. All of those code changes are not going to happen in one meeting and are not going to happen overnight. And we will have to be in contact with the school district. We will have to be in contact with our links, bus drivers, and we'll have to work through all of that. It's not going to be, I think, a perfect example of what could be an easy fix is the infill standards where it's, yeah, we can streamline that and make that easy. That's not going to create an impact on, on population increases. It's not going to create an impact on transportation. Some of these things will, and, and some of these things are going to be, at the end of this, we're going to get a document that says, this is what the city has agreed that we are willing to work towards and it doesn't have to be overnight. It's not like we're going to adopt this document and then at the next meeting adopt a bunch of code changes. There's going to be a timeline in which we're going to have to work through these moving forward. And all of those conversations are going to have to take place. There's, there's a need for us to do this. There's a requirement for us to do this, but the state did give us the time to, to implement it appropriately. And they did identify that we are, we do have the right to say, this is what we're willing to do to support our housing needs analysis. And if it's something that it's, we're, we're willing to do this part now, but we're not willing to do this now, then that thing that we're not willing to do now is probably going to come up in eight years. But all of this is the start of a very long process. So.
And that's fine. Our needs may change a lot over eight years and there's nothing wrong with that.
Was there any consideration given to the overlay between low-income individuals and individuals with disabilities? I feel like that might inform the conversation moving forward as far as what type of accessible housing along with, you know, kind of the consideration for the high-rise four-story apartment situation? Or is there any way to even figure that?
Good look at that.
Yeah, I think we have some, we have some data on the, the, the number of, you know, households that are, that are considered a physical disability. There's also ways to, to structure some of these code changes to try to incentive, incentivize accessible design in buildings. So something could be offered instead of as an outright allowance, but could say if you provide the units to be under universal design or there's other kind of certifications for that, then, then you can, you can get this incentive of, you know, higher density or, or something like that.
Something that I'm curious about is the, the practical difference between like a town home, some of these other tiny homes, the cottage clusters, I mean duplexes, multiplexes and stuff. I mean, what really do you get better out of a cottage cluster than you do an equivalent fourplex or sixplex or whatever? And, and just, I, I know there's a lot of weeds in that and a lot of granularity, but I, I would, I would like to know what, what, what that actually means, how it works and be able to dig into that level. Cause I, I feel like we're, we're kind of being offered high-level stuff without really knowing how this, how, how these different things actually compare to each other.
Yeah, we can bring back a little more information on that. I mean, the, a lot of differences between those housing types in terms of the ownership structure, the, the building code implications, the number of units you have attached. So we can spell that out a little bit more, write a little more background in the next meeting. Another thing I was thinking would be helpful to bring back on, you know, a lot of the, a lot of your comments about the changes to multifamily, the standards of whether it's four-story buildings, but also like the smaller, single-family lots are dealing with, with character issues, right? That's something we're not, we're not overlooking per se. It's just we're getting really kind of focused on the, on the housing production side of the equation here, but character and design is not unimportant. And so one thing we could do is to bring some examples of, for example, a smaller lot, single-family housing development in, in a smaller town, in a more small-town context, show you what that kind of looks like there. I know there are some examples around the state of that happening. In terms of the four stories, we could bring you a little bit more examples of some types of design standards that could be put in place to help mitigate for you some taller buildings. But could you have some standards that try to require a little bit more breaking down the massing of the building? So it doesn't appear quite so big, step backs and articulation, limiting the whole length of a wall. Things like that can make a difference in buildings, four stories, but it doesn't quite look how you're envisioning. So we can bring back more information on that if you think that would be helpful in kind of moving this conversation forward and the next day, next step.
And something I'd like to add is just, we mentioned this briefly, but a lot of these recommendations and ideas, they, it's not just that we came up with these based on, you know, what we know from Portland and bigger cities. We did an extensive amount of outreach and focus groups and interviews with developers in Lebanon. And we said, you know, what are some challenges that you have or what are some things that you might want to change based on projects that you've done locally? And so I think that's important to keep in mind and we probably didn't, didn't put that, you know, to the front as much as we, we should have, just from hearing the feedback. So, you know, the, the general feedback is people think the experience of developing in the city is very positive, you know, easy to work with, streamlined, efficient, all of that. We got a lot of that feedback and just kind of like a few things create some challenges. And so that's, that's generally where these recommendations emerged from. And we, I know there's a kind of background conversation on multifamily, but also, you know, one of the findings to keep in mind is single-family housing is needed. You know, the, the city is not producing it at the rate that's needed to meet the, the demand. And so most of the strategies that you're reviewing are intended to incentivize more single-family housing development for ownership. So just, just a few things to keep in mind. And it's for the growth that's anticipated. It's not to attract additional people. It's just knowing, you know, looking at all the population forecasts and the historical growth to, to, to meet the need that the city is assumed to have, not to just attract all sorts of new people to the city. So just some kind of details that I think might be helpful.
Just contextually for me is, are you talking to developers in Lebanon or developers of Lebanon?
Developers that have developed projects in Lebanon and developers that are housed and work and have offices in Lebanon. Both have been discussed.
I got you. Thank you.
Not to throw one additional bomb into the equation in terms of considerations, but.
But you're gonna?
I'm gonna. And we're not going to go into detail about it because we'll be here all night. But the properties that we have that are available for single-family home subdivision types, they're not cookie cutter, nice square boxes. We have a large swath of properties that have to build around wetlands. And, and so it's not like we're going to get those developments that are going to have the easy, you know, square blocks to them anymore. And so providing opportunities for a mix of larger lots, smaller lots, an opportunity to be able to build around the, the issue of wetlands equates to being able to unlock some of those properties, which will sit there for a very long period of time if we maintain the standards that we have now, which is fine if we maintain the standards we have now. It's just that that property will not necessarily turn into a single-family home subdivision at that. And so it's, we have to look at our geography as well and to the equation of how are we going to build and expand and grow for the commute we have and the community that we're anticipating to have.
So that kind of goes into that, the question I was going to ask. Going forward, are we assuming that there's not going to be a solution for the wetlands?
Yeah.
So, so this is work with what you've got kind of a thing?
Yes. There's no way to solve wetlands unless wetlands are no longer defined as wetlands and regulated by the federal government or by the state. And.
So you're saying there's a chance?
That is not going to happen in my lifetime. So I think it's embrace the wetlands. Start looking at them as ecological corridors that people can walk along and build around them.
You know, I, I think there is some work to be done at this statewide level to try to improve the issue at the margins to make it easier to do wetland mitigation, for example. And so we've recognized that in the list of strategies here to continue, for the city to continue to track that and make sure that it's up to speed on what changes that the state may affect, you know, building in, in areas that are constrained by wetlands. But it's, it's not a lot the city can initiate that will really make a difference on that issue.
Sorry.
No, it's reality. Okay. So is it the desire then to allow the consultants to bring back some additional information before we narrow this options down or not narrow it down?
I don't think we want to stick a fork in anything quite yet.
Okay. All right. So if that's, if that's agreeable with you guys, then we will adjourn this meeting and, and look forward to the next one.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Castaian for their, their work on this.
Yes, thank you very much.
Sure thing. Yeah, it's a very, yeah, very helpful discussion. We learned a lot. And I think we'll keep, keep looking at ways to, you know, fit this to Lebanon and try to address the issues you care about.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we are done.